Good evening, everyone. Today is February 7th, 2023. This meeting hearing of the AIR Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom in Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID 897-90800793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@AIR.MA.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. May I ask everyone to please rise with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have any amendments to tonight's agenda?
I don't have any. I'll make a motion. I'll make, sorry, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair Sills.
Aye.
Do we have any announcements tonight?
I didn't get anything from them.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay, all right. Anybody here for public input? Okey-dokey, all right. So, tonight is a joint meeting of the Select Board and FinCom. The Select Board has come to order, would the FinCom like to come to order?
I'm Kirk Freskowski, Chairman of the FinCom, and come to order.
Okay. So, we're going to be having the FY '24 AIR Shirley Regional School District Budget Presentation. So, if Dr. Renda, Superintendent of Schools, and Mr. William Pluckett, Finance Manager, please come on down. Yes, Mr. Pluckett is on Zoom.
Yeah, Assistant Superintendent Charlie Clear is going to join up here, if that's all right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. We are excited to present the fiscal year proposed budget to the Select Board and FinCom this evening. To start, I would like to read to you our draft district vision. We are currently doing strategic planning, and this is in draft form, and we will be putting this out to parents and students for some input, but as of now, the district vision is to create a dynamic, engaged learning community that provides equitable access and opportunity for all members, and empowers students to achieve at high levels by fostering intellectual rigor, creative expression, social-emotional well-being, and the agency to pursue meaningful paths and thrive as responsible citizens. Our presentation will include the fiscal year '24 budget, the assessments, and any questions that you may have. Next, I'd like to go over the timeline. In November, December of 2022, we met with all of the departments for a budget needs assessment. On January 3rd and 18th, we had a budget discussion with the Regional School Committee. On January 18th, the fiscal year '24 preliminary budget presentation was presented to the Regional School Committee. We are currently waiting for the current governor's budget. Under new administration, they are giving to the first week of March, which means that many of our numbers are preliminary and estimated. February 6th last night, we presented to the Shirley Select Board and Finance Committee. Tonight, we are here, February 7th, to present to you the Select Board and the Finance Committee. On February 15th, the final budget presentation and public hearing will take place at 6:30. On March 7th, the Regional School Committee hopefully will certify the fiscal year '24 budget, and on April 24th, we will be at the Annual AIR Town Meeting for a presentation if needed or to answer any questions, and on May 9th, we will be at the Annual Shirley Town Meeting for a presentation if necessary or to answer any questions. Next, we'll go over some basic enrollment numbers for you. For fiscal year '23, we have 1,636 students. That is an additional 14 students from last year. The projected number for next year is 1,684. The total number of students in out-of-district placements in AIR Shirley is 33. Projected for next year is actually down to 32. AIR Shirley Regional High School currently has 394 students. That's an additional 26 students from last year. AIR Shirley Regional Middle School has 367 students. That is down 23 students from last year. Laura A. White has 343 students. That's an additional 19 students from last year. And Page Hilltop has 532 students. That is down eight students from last year. Next, we will look at our choice out and choice in numbers. In fiscal year '23, we had 121 students choice out. That is an additional 11 students from the prior year. The projected change for fiscal, for the next fiscal year is actually three less students choice-out. AIR had 69 students choice-out this year, and Shirley had 52. For the choice-in, we had 97 students choice-in. That is down from an all-time high of 128 in fiscal year '19. It is down 29 students from fiscal year '18, where we had 126. It is important to note that we had over 35 students apply for school choice-in over the summer. Thirty-one of those were denied. School choice was closed for many of the grade levels coming back from the pandemic. The academic and social-emotional mental health needs of our students in AIR Shirley are more severe than they typically are, so we kept class sizes down, especially in early elementary. Kindergarten and first grade, we capped at 20. Most of the other elementars were at 22. This is something that we will look at every year, and if we feel we can meet the needs of our students and take in more school choice, we will open that. We have been having, many people have been applying for school choice on a rolling basis since school have started. We would have had a lottery for that in January if we would have had open slots, but we really didn't have any open slots. Next, we're going to take a look at the number of students who live in AIR and Shirley who attended a charter school, Neshoba Tech. I say "a charter school" because it's not just Parker. We do have students who attend Sizer in Pittsburgh. There were 33 students in fiscal year '23 in AIR that attended a charter school. That is actually down one from the prior year. We believe that will be an additional nine last going into the next fiscal year. Shirley had 31 students. That's actually an additional six from the prior year. We believe that might, that number may go up to additional for the next fiscal year. And a total for fiscal year '23 of 64 students. That's five additional from the prior year. If you look at the five-year trend, though, we are remaining fairly consistent. We're looking at a low in fiscal year '22 of 59, but the high was in fiscal year '18 of 71. Really kind of the same story with Neshoba Tech. Currently, AIR has 70 students who attend Neshoba Tech. That's an additional nine from the prior year. Shirley has 41 students who attend Neshoba Tech. That's down eight from that prior year. For 111 total students who attend Neshoba Tech, the numbers really range from anywhere from 99 to 111 over the past five years. Next, I want to talk about our English language learners. The state average for English language learners for fiscal year '23 is 12.1% of the population. In our district, we are 4.3% of our population are English language learners, or 71 students. There are currently eight students, or 2% of the high school population, are an English language learner. In middle school, it is nine students, or 2.5%. Laura White is at 5.2, or 18%, and Paige Hilltop is at 36 students, or 6.8%. It is important to note, if you look at Laura White, there is a large increase from fiscal year '22 to '23. That is because the elementary English language learners were all housed, or mostly housed, at Page Hilltop up until this year. Many of our neighboring districts were audited by DESI, and the suggestion was made to send language students to their homeschooling, to their home school, and not have these programs where you have one school that is your English language school. So, we tried to be proactive there and send some of the students back to Laura White. We did offer to parents to allow their students to stay at Page Hilltop if they've been there for some time and they were really feeling a part of that community. A couple of the parents took us up on that and stayed, but most of them were excited to go back to their home school. Next is the special education enrollment. Currently, 290 students of our 1,669 are in special education. There's additional 33 special education students in out-of-district placements for a total of 323 students. That is 19.4% of our population, and that is exactly the state average of 19.4%. I would note that we're down a percentage point from fiscal year '22, when we had 20.5% of our students in special education. Now, if the percentage of out-of-district placements among our special education students is 10.2, so 33 out of that 323 is 10.2%, and overall, out of the 1669, 2% of our population is in special education. Next, I want to review the cost of the special education out-of-district placement. In fiscal year '23, the range for out-of-district placements ranged from $38,496 to $327,961. The projected cost for next year range is $41,191 to $350,918. The total cost for fiscal year '23 was $3,412, or 8.9% of the budget. Next year, the projected is $3,201,530, or 9% of our budget. It's important to note that a 14% increase was approved by OSD for private day placements. That is why you're seeing such a big increase this year.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time this evening. This is Phil Pluckett, Director of Finance, Board of the District. This is what we start with when we're planning our budget. The drivers, starting with the general fund revenues at the top. These are all the revenues that come into the calculation and the assessment. They're subtracted from our general fund budget, and then the general fund revenues are subtracted from our general fund budget, and that remainder is the assessment. At the top, we have Chapter 70. This is an estimate because we took last year's number and added $30 per student, which is the minimum aid for Chapter 70 last year. It started at $30 per student and ended up at $60 by the, $60 per student by the time the budget process was finished. Charter reimbursement, we actually decreased it by $10,000 because our numbers are very stable in charter out, and the reimbursement is based on districts that see a large increase of charter students going out. So, we're not getting much of a reimbursement for charter any longer at this point. Transportation reimbursement for being a regional school district, we get transportation reimbursement from the state. That's been running about 80%, so we put in an increase of $50,000 there. And Medicaid, that program has been expanded to include more services to our special ed population, including health services, so we've increased that to $55,000. You'll notice transfers of E and D. In FY '23, we did transfer $240,000 to cap state and capital stabilization and to our spending reserve fund, so there is quite an increase there. Our E and D is not certified yet. We're expecting it to be certified over the next two weeks, and the school committee could vote to approve the use of E and D once that is certified. The middle section is our cost drivers. Of course, health insurance and salary increases are the big two numbers. We have over $18 million in salaries. This is our second year of our teachers' contract. They negotiated 3% COLA in steps. The average rate increase for teachers is 4.8% this year, and we also have our four ASB units are up for negotiations this spring, starting, first year of the contract will be in FY '24. So, we need $200,000 for our salary increases to our staff, and that includes all staff in addition to teachers and the ASB units. Health insurance, our health trust administrator advises that the increase could be 6% to 8%. We went on the low side, 6%, thinking that hopefully things will be a little bit better. They usually try to scare us with higher rates, and they come in a little bit lower, so hopefully it does. But we put in 6%, which is $223,000. We brought out-of-district private day tuition, we brought over flat. The OSD, the state agency that regulates private residential or private day tuitions for our special ed students, they approved a 14% increase, which we're going to fund through our circuit breaker revolving fund, and I'll get to that later on in this slide. We have some increases in regular transportation, our special ed transportation. In our middle sec retirement, they assess us. Our employees that are in the middle sec kind of retirement pay into the system through payroll, and we also have to, we are assessed based on our workforce that is in the county retirement system, basically to subsidize the system. We decrease salary increases, salary line changes, we rolled them into that request above at $725,000. Health offset is sunsetting. It's only for AIR former teachers that had their health insurance premiums. I think it was, they went from 85% to 75%, and for the employer paying, so they all got a $2,000 stipend if they took that premium change and that sunsetting, so we dropped that. We're down to 18 teachers, so we dropped that, and dropped the old valuation, which is every other year, and I, we decreased the homeless McKenna-Bento transportation by 5,000 and moved it into our regular transportation increase. So, all together with the minus $95,000 in the general fund revenues and the increase of $471,000 in these drivers, it's a net increase to the budget of $566,656. The bottom section is two of our revolving funds, one being the circuit breaker fund that I talked about earlier. That has been expanded to include transportation, and we've seen a significant increase to that reimbursement, so we're going to handle that OSD increase. So, we're budgeting the whole, what we expanded in FY '24 budget is whatever our reimbursement was in FY '23, so we're going to plan on spending the whole $975,000 for the out-of-district tuitions. These revenues are basically the same exercise. We did, we've seen a couple of revolving funds, school choice. So, the top section are our estimated receipts. We're actually anticipating with these, these funds, it will be $94,000 above where we were in FY '23. But then you go down to the charges, we've got increases to both choice sending and charter sending of $50,000 each. We're totally, recent charges is $100,000, so that offsets for negative $5,260 from a year ago from FY '23 budget.
It disconnected me. It disconnected me.
Is that where we're supposed to be?
We do this every year for the history of the budget, so I'm just going to go right to FY '24 compared to FY '23. The general fund is coming in at $31,892,566. That is actually a 1.2, sorry, 2.6% increase over the FY '23 general fund budget. Grants and revolving, they're up about $300,000 mainly due to that circuit breaker reimbursement that we see. And then all funds together, which is the general fund, then grants and revolving funds, the budget is $35,274. That's a 3.3% increase over the prior year. Our excluded debt is up due to the field project debt coming online in FY '24. It's a 14-year note for the field project that's allocated to AIR and Shirley, and we subtract that from all fund to get a all-fund-plus-debt figure of $32,505,892, which is a 2.4% increase over the prior year. So, the operating assessment, the operating assessment does not include debt. So, for FY '24, the proposed operating assessment is $20,983,913. This is a $580,000, $580,791 increase over the prior year, which is 2.8%. Foundation enrollment, our foundation enrollment includes all the students that are enrolled in AIR Shirley, any of our four schools, students that choice out, students that charter out, out-of-district special education students, and also our preschool special education students. So, this is a five-year rolling average as per the regional agreement, where the numbers from AIR and Shirley are averaged over five years to give a percentage for those five years, and all the way to the right, just above that orange box, FY '20 to '24, you see the percentages that are calculated for this year, so the FY '24 calculation budget, 56.8% for AIR and 43.2% for Shirley. Those numbers will be used to calculate any funding above the required local contribution from the towns. Capital debt, this is new this year. We're adding in the high school field project debt. Like I mentioned earlier, it's a 14-year note, and I think it's gross by the principal and interest for a high school field project. The total for this first year of the note is $464,928. The allocation between AIR and Shirley is based on a different calculation. It's, depending on which school it is, if the high school, we take the 50/50 blend of foundation enrollment and resident enrollment for the five years for AIR and Shirley, and we allocate the field project debt and the high school renovation debt by these percentages you see underneath, in the bottom section of the table. 54.5% for AIR and 45.5% for Shirley, and that's in the regional agreement for the incurring of debt. So, we're adding those amount on to the high school renovation note, which is a 20-year note. FY '24 will be a year 10, so we are halfway through after FY '24, and we have the total debt for FY '24 of $1,694,382, and that's allocated by the foundation enrollment splits, depending on what school it is. The middle table shows you the high school renovation debt, and then there's another agreement, a section in the regional agreement that AIR assumes part of the middle school debt. Their note is up on the middle school in FY '26, so we are getting down there, but AIR assumes $122,876 of the middle school debt from Shirley. And Shirley gets the credit for funding credit, so that is part of the agreement where AIR had to agree to take part of that debt on. There's also a small Shirley stabilization fund that was established for the regional agreement that is applied every year until it's going to be drawn down to zero. So, those are the numbers for the debts, the high school renovation debt only. Up in the top section, I forgot to mention, is CPA fund for the town of AIR. Very important, we had a group of folks that went to CPA and lobbied for funding for the field project, and CPA approved $300,000 for the high school field project debt for the town of AIR taxpayers. So, what we did was we took $300,000, we could have done it in one year, but the amount that AIR was allocated was less than that, so we split it into two installments. So, the first two years of the field project debt, AIR will receive a credit of $150,000, which lowers their assessment for the field project to $103,618 for the first year, and that will be in two installments, just for the AIR taxpayers. So, on to the next, is there any questions on that? I know there's a lot, it's kind of busy. So, rolling into the next slide is the proposed assessments for AIR and Shirley. Now, in row number one, the required local contribution, as Dr. Renda had said earlier, these are, these are estimates. So, we brought the FY '23 numbers over flat and applied a 4.5% foundation budget increase, which the Department of Ed had given us guidance on, that that was going to be the increase to the foundation budget. So, last year's numbers, a 4.5% increase to the foundation budget is what we're using right now, so these numbers may change depending on the Chapter 70 numbers that come out with the governor's budget in early March. So, the first line is set by the state, the second line is any funds above required local contribution that the towns are contributing, and that's allocated via the regional agreement for the five-year foundation budget rolling average, and then transportation is the same exact allocation via the regional agreement. So, for AIR, the total assessment, operating assessment, no debt, is $12,624,418, and that is an increase of $380,222 over FY '23, a 3.1% increase. Now, we add, in section four, we add in the excluded debt for AIR for FY '24 is $986,426, giving AIR a total assessment, operating assessment and debt of $13,610,844, which is an increase of $477,498, I'm sorry, $477,498, which is an increase of 3.6% over the prior year. And just keep in mind that the governor's budget will be coming out the first week of March. We will be having our E and D certified, so there's a couple of variables at play, and we will keep you posted as to where we are with any changes, and the school committee will take action as necessary.
All right, thank you. So I'll open it up to the board, any questions?
Yeah, just a question on choice out. What ages are you, are you seeing a trend with students deciding the choice out to other schools?
It really varies. I can, I don't have the exact breakdown for you tonight, but I can actually get that too. That's something we track. You see it really in transition years mostly, from fifth grade going into sixth grade, from eighth grade going into high school is where you're going to see the majority of the numbers. But there are kids who choice out, they never step foot in Air Shirley. A lot of those students, it's a convenience. We have found out lots of this is about convenience for parents. They'll put them in rural school someplace closer to where they work, or close to where daycare is if daycare's a family member and the family member lives in another town. So those are some of the reasons that we're finding out, but typically you're going to see the large increases going into middle school and going into high school.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I'm just curious on the health insurance for employees. When do you think you have a final number on that? Just because like six is kind of conservative, or is eight? Do you know when they're supposed to act?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Plunkett. Bill, did you hear that? Do we know when we'll have a final number on health insurance?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
A final number in health insurance increase? Do you know when we'll find out?
Yeah, the MMA, they decide what the range is in January, and then they come forward and they, their underwriters have to look at every single district and municipality and their trust, and they determine a separate rate for each of them. We're, we're in line with everybody else, and we usually know right above now it should be, you know, before the first week of March anyways.
Okay. Okay, I'll turn it over to you in case you or your team has any questions.
I have a question. How many?
Andrew Seale.
How many teachers are in the school district?
A hundred and sixty, between one-fifty-five and one-sixty-eight. It depends on how many of the positions are actually filled right now. We don't have every position filled.
Okay, how many openings here? What grades?
It's, well, the openings that we have wouldn't be a specific grade level. It would be a service provider such as a occupational therapist or a PCBA. There's some openings there, but there isn't like a fourth grade teacher opening.
Okay, thanks. And with school choice, you were talking about openings. So assuming you fill the residents and then you say, oh, I have this many slots left for outside.
That's exactly how it works. The only grade level that it gets very complicated for is kindergarten, because we typically don't know our kindergarten enrollment until the middle of August.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Any other questions, Andrew or Jim? I do not have any questions.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, thank you.
I do have a non, sorry, I have a non-budget question.
Sure.
So I know we had talked previously, I think it was at the field opening, about possibly the district putting in a letter of intent for a new page till top, or at least looking into elementary school for Air. Is that still the plan going into this year?
The statement of interest window is open. It is open until I believe April fourteenth. We have started that process. I will actually be presenting the process to the school committee at the next school committee meeting. It was actually a school committee meeting tonight at seven o'clock. This will be on February fifteenth. Part of that process is we can, we can enter more than one statement of interest. We could actually enter one for each school. However, the school committee is going to have to make a decision as to whether or not we want to submit two, or if we want to prioritize one. Eventually, at some point, we would have to prioritize one because MSBA would make that happen. They're not going to fund two, two school projects. So we will be presenting this to the school committee on February fifteenth. But in the meantime, we have already started to, to fill out the statement of interest process. I can, we can write the statement of interest, but we cannot submit it without school committee approval. So when that is done, we will ask the school committee to approve or prioritize a project. As you may know, Shirley is also interested in the process of possibly having a new elementary school. If we submit two, we would have to prioritize one of those eventually, or before we submit two, the school committee can choose to prioritize one of those projects beforehand before we submit.
Thank you.
And once the, everything has been proved and it's been submitted, how long does it take before you hear back?
That's a great question. The, I believe we would hear back before July first of whether or not we would be accepted into the pipeline. But I'm going to double check that, and I can get back to you. I can send an email.
Okay. So a few months, a few months.
It takes a few months.
Okay, and if I remember correctly, sometimes it doesn't happen the first try, so then you have to resubmit.
That is true.
Is that a normal process?
That is part of the normal process. You can submit. If it is not accepted into the pipeline, you are given feedback on your statement of interest. You can edit it, make some changes, and resubmit the following year.
Okay, but it would have to be the following year when the window opened up again?
It would be the following year when the window opens, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, Pauline, I'm sorry, I didn't see the handle.
No, I just put it up, Jim.
Oh, okay.
I was waiting until the school department was finished. I just want you all to know, it's very hard to hear half of the folks at the table, because I think they're so far away from the microphones. I don't think it's a technological issue. I think it's a softness of voice issue. So if those who are speaking could move closer to the microphone when they are, that would be awesome.
Okay, thank you. We will. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So with that, I mean, thank you. You're welcome to sit here with us. I'll lead up to the chairs to what you guys want to do.
Um, the, I believe I, I am going to stay. Andrew?
Yeah, I'm interested in staying.
Okay.
I'm not staying.
Okay.
No offense.
I'm wounded, wounded.
Ah, okay. So we will make a motion then to, someone can make a motion to adjourn.
I will move your motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. See you in two weeks, David.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up, our building commissioner, Charles L. R. Schultz, Jr.
Good evening.
Good evening.
May I do a few people tonight? Would you like to start, or would you like me to start?
Yeah, you start.
Okay. Do you want to go with the budget? Numbers first, or do you want to do the zoning and the dumpsters?
Well, according to the agenda, you're supposed to talk about enforcement of the trash receptacles and dumpster code enforcement update. So we're going to do it in order.
Okay.
Please ensure that you speak clearly, okay?
Yes, I will try to.
Maybe we can turn this a little.
Turn the microphone? So this, these are for just the online broadcast, for the cable broadcast. The microphone for the online broadcast is right in front of the.
Okay.
Different mics.
Okay.
Okay. So to start with zoning, I just want to do a brief explanation what zoning entails, because there's some different ideas what zoning is about. So there's basically two aspects of zoning. One is the building aspect, where you have, it encompasses plan review for any new additions, accessory structures, new buildings, new businesses, et cetera. Need to ensure that the project meets all requirements for setbacks, dimensions, frontage, height, yard, lot and area setbacks, lot, frontage, building heights, building coverages, floor area ratios, percentage of open space, what zone it's in, what use, if they need site plan review, if they need conservation, if they need DPW, if they're in overlay district. So that's part of the zoning too. It's not all just enforcement, as a lot of people think. And that takes a lot of time during the plan review process, and we have to be very diligent, because if we make a mistake and tell someone this parcel's owned for a certain thing and it's not, it can be, it can cost financially. So that takes a lot of time out of the zoning portion of zoning also. So the second portion of the zoning, as we all know, is the violations. So we do it two ways. We either drive through town, find something we believe is in violation, and then we go back and investigate it and see if it doesn't conform to any of our zoning bylaws, or we start at a complaint form. And the reason the complaint forms there is, a lot of people get mad at their neighbors on some days and just call up and say, hey, this and that. So it cuts down a little of our workload, plus it shows that we're non-biased when we go to send someone a violation, you know, you're picking on me. So it protects the town that way too. So, once we figure out if there, if a violation exists, I just brought these two, you want to pass them to the chair. I'll give you the process, but these are the last two examples we have. One is, was an ongoing one across from the pond that got resolved. And you can see these went through the legal counsel, and how long it actually takes and how many letters we have to generate before town council believes we're going to have the ability to go to court and get a positive decision for the town. And at this point in time, because of COVID, you probably can't get it on the docket for six months is what they're averaging, normal time for complaint. And that's more of a serious complaint like the two I just handed you, which require emergency action. So in order to, in order to start the process, say we get the complaint form, Mike does a review of the complaint form, hands it to me, I make sure his review is proper, that we have fourteen days for that. Then we send out the first violation letter. And we always grant them, and this is on the advice of council, anywhere, depending on the violation, from seven to thirty days to correct it. After that, you have to send out another letter saying you're going to fine them if they don't come into compliance. Then you send out a third letter saying we're going to use legal counsel and fine you if you don't. Then you send out a fourth letter, and hopefully, this doesn't happen, I've got the percentages. Twenty-five percent of the time, you send out the first letter, they'll call us, will say, look, let's meet, just say a gas station, they have signs out that are improper. We go down there and say, hey, here's a bylaw, you can't have this second, and they take it down. Fifty percent of the time, after we send the second letter, we get a response and hopefully compliance. Fifteen percent of the time, we get it on the third letter, fifteen to twenty, and I would say the last five percent are the times when we have to seek legal counsel. And to do that, I have to go visit with the town manager, get his approval, to start the process through town council. After we do that, we send out another letter from town council, because this is the one that's going to end up going to court if they don't comply. And then we do a cease and desist letter, and then we ask to be put on the docket. And that can take anywhere from, like I say, six months to a year nowadays. So that's how the zoning actually has to work. You can't just, I've got some other handles that I'll give here, but we're not allowed to go just onto private property or knock on a door. And I brought some handles from KP Law. They did a seminar on this, and it's a Kamara, it's a national federal decision when someone entered a property without being invited on. So we can't just go knock and say, look, you know, your couch has been out there for quite a while. We have to follow the legal process, no matter if it's sixty-six Westford Road or some other address. It has to be the same for everybody, or we'll get thrown out of court. And so far, we've, I think we've been successful in every case since I've been here on the town side. So we work with council on these violations, and they kind of give me advice on how much notice I should give them before they think, you know, we have a good chance of winning. So we don't just pick something out of the air and say, hey, two notices, we'll do it. It's not that easy. And it does take a lot of time. The other day, we had to find the older owner of a, where people were squatting, and it took a whole day because it was, so in the past, it went to probate, it was bought by an investment company, and the deeds weren't changed yet, so you just have to keep researching, go to the assessors, the town clerk, everybody. And we finally found it. I don't even know how he found it, but he found it to send out that letter. So sometimes it takes a very long time just to get in touch with people when it's a bank-owned property or in an LLC. So that, those are the two components really of zoning and what we do up there. As for the dumpsters, I've done my best due diligence, and the building department, as I read all our bylaws, town and zoning, we really can't enforce any of the dumpsters. It just doesn't fall under us. We've got a section in the nuisance bylaw, and the, the section reads, "Any substantial interference with any public place, street, or private way, to include the placement of snow, ice, and any other debris that interferes with safe passage on a public roadway or sidewalk." The issue here is it says substantial interference. So I know those trash cans on Central Ave are a nuisance, and you have to walk around them, but is it substantial interference? It, you know, it really isn't, because you can get around them? It's not, I don't think it should be there.
So we would at least have to define the word substantial.
Yeah, or, yes, yeah. So there is, I started a couple of years ago and to work on the zoning bylaw, because even though it falls under the planning board purview, to bring these to town meeting and get them approved, and I'm just, my department's the enforcement agent, I just didn't have enough time. You'll see in the numbers I created for the additional twenty hours, how little time I actually had, so I had to stop. But there's quite a few things in that book that need to be.
Stop about not having lunch.
Oh, no.
Okay, okay.
I know you are. But anyhow, so there, as I read our zoning bylaw, it mentions it there under the nuisance, and then under section D of the nuisance, it talks about debris and trash. That's more like trash that's in someone's yard, not like trashing a trash can. So those are, and it falls under nine-point-two of the town zoning bylaw for a new, for new development, major reconstruction of a multifamily, this and that. And that's more of a planning board site issue, issue, when they go for plan review, is they can say, look, we need, we want it screened, and this and that, and they have to do it in order to at least get a CO to move into that development. So those I have no, the building department has no jurisdiction under. So I went to the trash haulers regs, and under number seven of the solid waste trash hauler regs, under enforcement, the only people that can enforce these are the border health agent, border health member, or any police officer. And permitting doesn't even fall under the building department. So I really have nothing to sink my teeth into, to go after these people, and I can't just make stuff up, because I know it shouldn't be there, but eventually, if it goes to court, if someone challenges it, we're going to lose, in my opinion, with how the bylaw is worded. In a nutshell.
I had kind of wondered about the border health process, part of it, because I seem to recall years ago, when we were doing the public hearings about the transfer station and everything, that that was being kind of discussed. So, so people should go talk to the border health then?
Yeah, but really the.
If, if they have, if there's a substantial problem, which maybe defines the word substantial.
And the issue, in my opinion, is that they go to the border health, or even if there was something I had more substantial, is that you have to give them a timeframe to alleviate the non-compliance. And usually in that timeframe, it's picked up, because either they're short on help, so they don't send the trucks out. And really, I try to think of solutions, and, and really, the only solution that I really thought would be acceptable would be to have a townwide pickup, would be the only way to start, because all the variables are by one company, they're all out one or two days. You have someone that you can call and say, you know, what's going on, but that's a bigger problem than the building department.
Right, and the town, well, has said that they don't want that, and also, the problem with that, the residents lose their choice.
Yep.
And they don't like.
I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just kind of continuing that conversation.
Yeah.
To what's been said, because people like that choice, which, you know, I agree, I like the choice.
But even, what would your complaint be to the border health, some of these trash is waiting to be picked up? It's inside a receptacle on the road, or?
It's too far in the road or something, I don't know.
But that's usually after.
Or it's always on the road.
Yeah.
I mean, that's one thing I've noticed, there are certain houses that the receptacles just sit in the street.
But even then, like, at the border health, there's no, it's a receptacle.
Also, it's hindering, you know.
Traffic.
Yeah.
It's just something that would have to, someone has to come up with some solution, otherwise it's just going to be like this.
It's ridiculous.
And from myself being here for, going on eight years now, I really don't get that many complaints about trash. I get more about water flowing from one neighbor's property to another, or fence violation, or someone built a shed too close. So it's really not my. about trash. I get more about water flowing from one neighbor's property to another, or fence violation, or someone built a shed too close. So it's really not my biggest complaint that I get is trash. And it is bothersome, you know, when they put it on the sidewalks, but I can't do anything. I don't believe I have any jurisdiction to, to send a noncompliance order for a trash can on a walkway. I believe when these projects come through, you know, they should, like, the new one on 60th Central Ave, off the sidewalk, he paved a two-foot area about 12-foot long, that's where the trash cans go. And they're not on the sidewalk, and the trash haulers can get to them. So when they're going through site plan, they really should concentrate on making sure those dumpsters that are going to be on site are screened. And, you know, as far as, probably the worst one on Columbia Street, that's on the road, always overflowing, because it's so small, because they can't fit another one, that's, you know, preexisting, you really can't force them to do anything with it, and I don't have anything to sink my teeth into in order to have them do anything to it.
Dennis, do you have a question? You're on mute.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, going back quite a while, this has been a thorn in my saddle. So it, it sounds like the bylaws are not sufficiently rigorous and specific enough to clean up the dumpster issue or the trash issue in town. And so I guess it would need a rigorous examination of the bylaws to try to make them, you know, kind of reflect what I think is a reasonable standard. You know, I was struck by the fact that the police budget, which, you know, I was at the hearing, and they kind of talked about what some capital expenditures that they wanted to do, and we all know where the police station is. And they are seeking a capital expenditure to screen the dumpster that they have there, which is behind in the parking lot somewhere, it's nowhere near the sidewalk, or I don't even think the, the parking lot. But, you know, the police chief felt like it's kind of nice to dress up the place and present a good face to the public, and to, you know, kind of make things a little better for the town, so we're going to screen our dumpster. I think that some manner of rigor has to be applied to private property owners, real estate investors, legacy property owners, who have saw fit, are seeing fit not to do those things. Like, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable to screen dumpsters. It seems to me pretty clear that dumpsters are placed for the convenience of the hauler. And if that means within two feet of the sidewalk, if that means, you know, you line up six of them in the parking lot, then that's what you do. And there has been obviously substantial public investment in the town over the last five years, and if those property owners need to invest some money into their property to clean it up to some reasonable standard, I don't think that that's an unreasonable thing for the town to do. Now, exactly what wording would be required, or whether the DPH are, or building, or zoning, or planning, would be the ones to do that, you know, you are in a better position to know that than I am. But it just seems, you know, it's a little frustrating to walk down the street, or drive down the street, and see, you know, dumpsters, you know, within three, four, five feet of the road, clearly invisible, occasionally overflowing, they're not overflowing all the time, but if, you know, something gets delayed, they're occasionally overflowing. I've seen some places that have two dumpsters, because they have, they had two different haulers, and one brought in his own and left the old one there. So, so it seems like this is, this is something worth doing, in my view, for the benefit of their town. The other thing about trash haulers, and I don't know what the specifics are, but it would seem to me not unreasonable for the town to be able to say to them, you know, Tuesday's your collection day, or, or Wednesday's your collection day. We must have a dozen, a dozen different garbage companies coming, you know, all, you know, all throughout the week, some on Monday mornings, Tuesday, you know, whatever. It doesn't seem unreasonable that we, and I don't know if you can, in fact, but if you could, it seems reasonable to me to say to them, you know, trash pickup in here for you guys is, I don't know, Wednesdays. So you all come on Wednesdays, you all get your thing, that up.
Well, Dennis, I think part of the problem that you're not understanding, as far as the different trash haulers, is that they're hauling from different towns. And, and again, you know, the people who have hired that trash pickup person, they're working with them as to what day is they're coming to pick up. And the part with the dumpsters, and no one's disagreeing with you that maybe there might be some fixes that could be made, but as far as the dumpsters and everything, you have to remember also that some of these properties are pretty old, and don't necessarily have the room to be able to upgrade, to do a screening or things like that, because of the, the way they're built. So to tweak a nuisance law, you know, it's not a bad thing, these things should always be looked at, and to see if there's some improvement. But I don't think that, one, I don't think that there's that many people, unfortunately, are that invested in it. That doesn't mean that three days from now, there won't be, okay? But that's part of the problem, because if you're going to make a change to a bylaw, as you know, it would have to be worked out, it has to be reviewed by town council and whatnot, and it has, and then that's even before it goes to town meeting. And then if town meeting does so inclined to, to approve, and you know, you've seen it, where we've argued about whether it should be 500 feet or 250 feet, and who, how many amendments are going to be attempted to be made, then, depending on town meeting's vote, then it's going to go to the state to be finalized for approval. So, so there's, there's so many nuances, but I think the thing with this, with the trash haulers and everything like that, you have to start with border health.
Well, in, in a lot of cases, especially, you know, in some parts of the downtown, it's not even clear to me why they would necessarily need a dumpster. I think that two of those large, or three of those large blue barrels that they could wheel in, wheel out, would take up less room, that would operate for the two, three, four unit, you know, apartment, apartments that we have, you know, scattered around downtown. You know, I think that an interested property owner could easily institute that, in fact, some of them do.
But, but that also has to, they have to work within the trash haulers' guidelines also.
I'm sorry, which guidelines?
They would also have to work with the trash haulers' guidelines also. So the trash hauler might say, we don't want those blue buckets, you've got to do this. See, there's a lot of little nuances here that are involved in this.
I, I understand, but, well, in my view, I'm arguing for the interests of the town. The interests of the, of the trash haulers is not, are not the interests of the town.
I'm not interested in the trash haulers' feelings, I'm trying to explain to you what the rules might be with the contract that they have with the trash hauler.
Well, that's a, that is...
So then it falls into the law, so, so, let me take another question. Yes, Pauline?
Oh, hold on. I'm trying to unmute myself, I'm so, so sorry. I appreciate, can you hear me for a second?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. I appreciate Dennis's concerns, and I will gladly give recognition to Robert for resolving an issue I addressed him in March, I think it was of 2021. But there are competing, and what Charlie said tonight is so true, there's a bylaw, and then there are border health regulations, which are not competitive one with one another, but they address different issues. And that's where I'd like to focus this. I really don't know what the complaint was, or what prompted Scott to put this on the agenda, but as Robert will tell you, and I think both, I think all the selectmen know this, I've been following this since March of 2021. You all know I'm in Abbott Walker, and when 48 Central Ave opened, there were 14 trash containers over a period of time that stood on Central Ave for days on end. And that is a function of the haulers' pro, well, not only the residents, but also the haulers. The border health regulations require the haulers to follow certain procedures in emptying the trash container, I call them the pesky rolling trash containers, and leaving them in such a fashion that they don't interfere with the safe usage of our sidewalks and streets. And it wasn't until, I think, May, Robert, when I sent the final picture of the total blockage of Central Ave, that it was addressed and addressed well, and at least at 48 Central Ave, the issue has resolved. I think there's a solution to this that is so simple, but nothing in government is simple, right? But I would like to think it is. There are three boards, elected boards, involved in this process. The selectmen, who have ultimate authority over all things related to the town, the planning board, who are the initial part of board that would be able to issue orders of condition, and the border health who have regulations for the safety of persons using the means of egress and travel in the town sidewalks and streets. And I think if the three, a representative of the three boards came together and came up with a game plan of addressing the haulers, I don't think this is a problem with the residents, but it's the haulers. They indiscriminately drop the containers wherever they are, even if the resident left them in the driveway, on their property, or anywhere off the beaten track, traffic freeway. The haulers leave them wherever they are. I'm not talking about the large dumpsters, Dennis, because I think that's a wholly different issue. But these rolling trash containers are even a bigger issue to pedestrians and people view as a runner and a cyclist, understand this. There were no orders of conditions imposed on 48 Central Ave, which was approved by a planning board of several years ago. I attended the site approval issues for 60 Central Ave, there were no orders of conditions about trash containers there, but it was discussed at the meeting, and as Charlie said, yes, they have paved a section where the trash containers should be left, and probably will be left by the residents. The question remains, will the haulers who empty them put them back where they belong? So here's my thought. If a trash hauler is not abiding by the regulations issued by the border health, why does the board not put them on notice, fine them, which is a provision of their regulations, and/or rescind the permit? It would not be very difficult to identify and repeat transgressions, transgressors, sorry. And just for your all information, I know this from what I do for work now, the original hauler at 48 has been sold twice in the last four months. So currently, I think they've changed haulers based on the trash containers, but about a month ago, the new haul was based in Canada. We are never going to get anywhere chasing a company in Canada. So I share that all with you, I'm sorry if that sounds a bit tripe, but I think it's the town's responsibility to put the haulers on notice. We're not going to stand for their lack of dedication or responsibility to our regulations and bylaws.
So I think we are in agreement with the fact that, you know, there should be, should be some tweaking, and I think we all are in agreement that the border health needs to look into this also. So I, I think we've spent a lot of time on this, and I'm going to move on to the next thing, but I would like to see the border health, this brought to the attention of the border health, maybe they could watch this segment, and I'd like maybe to hear from them as to, you know, what they're going to do as far as their portion of the enforcement. I think we should also contact the planning department and let them know what this conversation is, and if, if it's going to be, you know, have a member of each board meet to hash things out, to see what can be done, then I think then we should do that, okay?
Could I, could I just ask?
Real quick, Dennis.
Yeah, so, does the town have the authority, you know, the town, one of the town boards, does the town have the authority to regulate the hauling companies and the placement of dumpsters?
I think for the hauling companies, it is the border health, as far as the placement of dumpsters, that we got to double check.
Right, but the town has the authority to implement some level of regulation on those things.
Right, which it would, it would appear that something needs to be tweaked so that we can do that, so, which is what we're going to try to do.
Right, and the other thing is, you know, to some extent, you know, the border health, I'm always a little, it doesn't, it's not clear to me why it's seen as a health issue, but I think it's important...
Because there's trash?
No, I understand, but I think it's also important that this notion of what constitutes blight or a nuisance is of valid public concern.
That was actually discussed about, I believe, at a town meeting a few years ago, because what you might see as blight, somebody else doesn't, and therein lies the problem. Therein lies the problem. So, but I think we've, I think we've talked about trash a little too much, and we need to move on to the next item, okay?
All righty.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Charlie, you were going to tell us why you want to increase the building inspection hours.
Okay, first, for the first statement I just made about zoning. Second, the second, it's impossible for me to keep up and do, give a service to the residents that they deserve. You have the numbers, I spouted them out the other night, but the permit's at 503 last year. And the fees that are being generated more than covers an additional 20 hours for a person to bring me up to two 40-hour people. And I don't want to get into the past, but for years and years, someone was very complacent because it worked well for them to only have two days a week.
Yes, I was.
And a lot of stuff was let go.
I remember those days.
I included this third page of the package that was given to you, shows all the multifamilies we have in here, that I'm supposed to do a periodic inspection. I provided that in the package too, that, we've never done one in the eight years that I've been here. The only ones we ever caught is when a resident almost came down a fire escape that fell apart, so we'd go inspect it, and we probably had to have the owners of the multifamilies replace at least five fire escapes that I can remember off the top of my head. So all these inspections have gone undone, and they are a state mandate under chapter 110 of the IRC, and I just don't have time to do it all by myself at this point, with the increased permits and everything else, inspections and stuff.
I think that's been clearly, yeah.
Yeah. And trust me, I'm a taxpayer, so I don't want my taxes to go up, but I need this, or the department needs it not to.
The department needs it.
Yeah.
I agree. All right, any questions?
No questions.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hey, how are you?
Pretty good.
All right, so I have three items on the agenda tonight for select board business. The first is street acceptances, and in my memo, I indicated the, the streets that were voted for acceptance at Fall Town Meeting 2022, which are Pleasant Street Extension, Aportion, Woodland Way, and Hemlock Drive Aportion. The final step of street acceptance is the select board acquiring the streets, and there's the way to acquire them, we've worked with town councils through the, an order of taking, and town council prepared those, and I worked with them to get that done, those were included in the packet. And, and so the board, I recommend the board votes to execute the order of takings to acquire the streets and the required easements for the... to acquire the streets and the required easements for the, those three streets.
Any questions?
No questions. No. I'll make a motion that the select board execute an order of takings to acquire Pleasant Street Extension, a portion of that, Woodland Way, and Hemlock Drive, a portion that presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Streets of now have been formally taken and accepted.
Great. The second item is for the Spectacle Pond Transmission Main Replacement Project, change order one. So the project has been completed, and this is the final change order from actual occurrences that happened out there. So what happened was, we completed the project, the actual quantities of work were less than the estimated in our contract, so there's a reduction of just about $21,000 in the change order. But while we were doing the work, there was a, there's a culvert, a 48-inch culvert on the accessway, which collapsed when we worked around it, which we anticipated could be a potential issue. So we weren't totally surprised when it happened, but we had to replace it under an emergency condition, and we went through the proper process with conservation and everyone. So there was a change order for replacing that culvert, about $65,000. So the balance, the balance of that is about $44,000. Well, it's exactly $44,444.93. So that's the, the cost, the price of the change order, and that's for signature by the chair.
Any questions?
I have no questions. I'll make a motion. The board approved change order number one for Spectacle Pond Transmission Main Replacement Projects, in the amount of $44,444.93. Second.
No, that, no.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Too many, too many boards.
I did.
I totally agree. You know, I've gotten to the point where if I see Spec Pond, I'm up, I start going to twitch in my eye because it seems like we're always talking about Spec Pond.
That was, yeah. That was a good, that was the ARPA project, that was, they went really well. Yeah. Okay, final item is another change order. So this is for the Air Waste Water Treatment Plant FY 2020 Improvements Project. And I got to say, the project did start in 2021. It should have finished this past summer in 2022. But just with the economic climate and especially the equipment we need for this project, VFDs and pumps, it's been taking a long time to receive those, and we still have a few left to, to receive, but the project is, will be likely substantially complete this month. And then we'll just be waiting for a couple VFDs to finish, hopefully later this spring if we get them. So the change order here is just, there's been some unforeseen items as we've gone along and had to deal with, but the highest cost item I mentioned in the memo is the tank drain and wet well restoration of, of that tank drain. And it's about $177,000. And this was really requested by the town and working with our engineer. It's something that, you know, would have been great to include in the, the base of the project, but when we started getting out there and we were going to replace pumps in it, we started looking at the structure and, and the structure's in very poor condition. I have some pictures I'm going to show in a minute. But there's concrete spalling, rebar exposed. It really needs to be dealt with before we put any pumps in there. So the change order, kind of in short, it includes bypassing the tank drain, replacement of piping, cleaning, removing concrete, replacement of concrete. And this, it's a 25-foot deep structure, so it's pretty, um, deep and has a lot to be dealt with. It also includes replacing pumps and testing as well. And so, Carly, do you want to show the pictures? I can kind of show. I don't know if anyone's been down to the wastewater plant before, but these are pictures from the, um, some of the work that's been done for the project. Yeah, so hopefully go in order. So you can see those two gray pieces of equipment there. Those are the new pumps. They're the waste activated sludge pumps, so those. So basically, the, the upgrades we're doing right now are all the sludge from the wastewater treatment plant. So in our settling tanks, we have sludge, the primary and secondary settling tanks. So these are for the secondary tanks. It pumps the sludge into sludge storage. So if you want to go to the next picture. So these pumps are for the thickened primary sludge. So this is sludge that comes from our primary thickeners. There's three pumps, you can see two in the picture here. So those are new and installed. And this pump here is actually, it's a sludge, um, sludge transfer pump, and it pumps the sludge into the sludge storage tanks. So the, the storage tanks are kind of the final disposition of the sludge before it goes to a, a hauling truck. And so these are, these are blowers, so they blow air into the two sludge tanks, sludge storage tanks, two and three, and that helps to thicken the sludge as well. If you want to go to the next one. And this shows that the air diffusing piping inside one of the sludge storage tanks. So here, this, these are the, we also did an upgrade to the plant water system. So the plant has two sources of water. There's plant water and protected water. And the protected water is your drinking water, but plant water is basically water that's been gone through the treatment process. It's not considered potable drinking water at that point, but it's considered clean to the standards of the effluent of the plant. So that can be reused, you know, for processes within the plant, which this is actually getting reused for the gravity belt thickener, which is coming up in the next photos.
Also?
Yeah, GBT. So this is the gravity belt thickener. And so basically, sludge is going to get pumped into the GBT. And if you want to go to the next picture, Carly, I took a picture of the interior. The sludge will be, um, I don't know if I say dosed, but yeah, dosed with a polymer concentration, which will help to thicken that sludge, and it runs through these, um, I don't know what you call these here, but through these mechanical piece of equipment, and it sort of makes the sludge into a cakey substance, and then it goes out and, and goes into the back end of the sludge storage tanks, and it becomes thicker than it was before it went in. So, you know, that's going to help us to haul less slug, you know, less sludge away. Right now, when we haul a tank or truck a sludge away, it's like three and a half percent solids, so this will bump us up. Hopefully, we'll get, you know, five or five to six percent solids is, is what we're hoping for. So that'll reduce the amount of load you have to haul away. And then these pictures are the tank drain. And so the tank drain, what it does, there's flow, there's flows from the, what's called the headworks of the plant, the initial raw wastewater going into the plant. It goes through a grit process, and the flows from that grit end up in here, as well as all the floor drains to the building and some other flows as well. And this is where we're replacing pumps, but we also need to replace the pumps and address the wet well. So we looked into several alternatives. We looked into rehab and doing replacement, doing kind of expansion tank around it. And really, it would be very costly because it's so deep, you'd have to drive sheet piles down into the ground. It's right next to the building, there's utilities in the way. So rehab is the better option. And so you can see here the rebar shown. If you want to show the last picture too, Carly, but all the, um, the pump guide rails and the piping are all heavily rusted, so. So this is what the change, the change, the fault of the change order is rehabbing this tank drain, but also replacing the piping, replacing all the parts, and putting in chopper pumps as well. And, and Kerry Cooper, the town accountant, also signed the agreement indicating that there's sufficient funds.
I said Gary Cooper.
Yeah. So as you can see in my memo, I, um, we had, the project budget's 3.8 million, and the contingency we had in there is about 750,000, and the change order's for 241,754. That's for signature by the board, so recommend we move forward with that.
Just to clarify, I thought you said Gary Cooper, just former Westerner. In case anybody's wondering what I was saying.
Oh, no.
The strong silence.
No. I don't make questions either. I'll make a motion to approve change order number one, Air Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project for the amount of $241,754 for signature by the board. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
All right. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So Dan, if you want, this one you can take back. The other one I got to motorize, I'll do that in the morning.
Yeah, sounds good.
This will be ready for you in two seconds.
All right. So, next up, Robert.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. Under my report, under the administrative update, you have in the packet, the town warrants that were reviewed and approved since the board last met on January 17th. In terms of the administrative update, just a couple of highlights. Obviously, the main focus of everybody at this point is really the development of, of the budget, and I'll talk about a budget update in just a moment. The town, as the chair knows, conducted its public ascertainment hearing as part of the cable negotiations on January 18th at the high school. All of the letters that were submitted are posted to the Capitol, uh, to the, excuse me, the Cable Advisory webpage has the letters in support of the town's proposal, and those negotiations are actively underway between the Cable Advisory Committee and Comcast and is moving forward. The goal, the current license agreement expires on March 31st, and it looks that we will be on target to have the committee come before the select board to present a new license, and we will keep you updated on that process as it moves forward. Last week, unfortunately, so weekend before that, there was an electrical event downtown due to the storm that created a power surge that impacted the town's network server. Apparently, three of the eight drives in the server were damaged. The good news is, at first, the fear was, was this some type of cyber event or cyber terrorist event? So there was, it was not, which is good. Balloon, yeah. And I want to thank Cindy Knox, who is semi-retired, I guess, but not after last week, and Drive Tech, we did get, everything is back and running, but the bad news was that we lost a lot of capability last week as they were repairing and upgrading the network server. We did have basic email, but not access to any of the files. I will be meeting with Cindy and Chuck Schultz, our facilities director, and Drive Tech to do a full debrief on what happened, as well as to put together a contingency plan moving forward. The good news is no data was lost, and we had a backup system, and we want to further enhance that system. Also, we want to discuss a better plan of action in terms of uploading the lost data. That's what took, you know, a lot of the time. We do, Cindy anticipates, and we'll have the final number, we anticipate that the total cost impact was about $10,000. $5,000 in hardware, $5,000 in labor, not Cindy, but Drive Tech and what have you. We're confident at this point that the current IT budget could absorb that, but we'll get a specific figure, and this may tilt the IT budget towards our reserve fund territory shortly. But we'll get more information on that, and we'll also have an update on the plan and recommendation moving forward on that. So in the interest of time, unless the board has any administrative questions, I'll get right into the, into the action items. The first one is just the FY 24 budget update and FY 24 energy budget update. So as the board is well aware, and members of the FinCom that are here tonight, we're well into the, into the budget process, which is a true team effort by the whole town. The Capitol Planning Committee just completed its work last week, and I was going to propose perhaps selectmen, couldn't I, for the February 21st meeting, could give a brief overview of the Capitol recommendations for the board?
Yes.
There's some challenges there, and we can speak to, to that on the 21st, but a very dynamic process as always. As selectman Livingston knows, the rate review process is gearing up on water and sewer. So we'll move forward on that. The board saw, and it's posted to the budget webpage, the Neshova Valley Technical High School assessment came in on Friday. I did go to the event there. It's $985,508 for FY 24. Represents an increase of $150,834, which is being driven largely by an increase in air steward enrollment. Obviously, tonight, we have the Air Shirley Regional School District's budget and information to digest. Couple other highlights. The good news, since the first budget forum that we did, one of the major drivers is the energy in the budget. Since that forum, facilities, VPW, other departments are really drilling down on the energy front, and we'll continue to have an update. We had factored in draft one, a 16-cent increase per kilowatt hour on the electricity as of November 1st. We're now looking more in the ballpark of 12 cents, so that's progress on the electric front, and there may be some progress on the natural gas front. So I just want the takeaway for the board is, this is a priority of the budget, as it's one of the major budget drivers, and we're looking to really drill that down. Unfortunately, the Minute and Man Neshova Health Group met yesterday, and they voted a 13.75% increase in the health insurance. The town of Air did vote no for that proposal. We did budget for draft one, we put an assumptive estimate of 15%. We had hoped for 10%, and there was a proposal for 10%. However, by three votes, the 13.75% is what was adopted. We will be, after this, we have to get through the budget process and, and town meeting, but reconvening the insurance advisory committee to look at other options. The biggest driver here is two towns have left the group, the town of Carlisle and the town of Harvard. And when they left, the charter that formed this is so old that they were held harmless, there was no enforcement for any existing claims. So when they left, they, that's changed since then. It doesn't do us any good now, but the 13.75% is, is concerning. The good news is, I mean, we assumed the worst-case scenario is 15%, so there'll be a slight, a little bit there, but more to come on that process as we look to best options moving forward. Madam Chair, I would, the, of the last piece on the budget, the Department of Revenue is just, they've gotten to air as far as the certification of the free cash, so we should have that information shortly. Once we get that, we'll transmit that to the select board in the FinCom, and the buy board generally meets to discuss initial recommendations on suggested uses for free cash, and I know we'll talk about that more at this table and at the budget forum. The final thing, Madam Chair, I'd like to also just propose for February 21st, in addition to a Capitol update, I'd like to present at, by that time, and transmit to both the select board and to the FinCom and get on the budget page, what I'll call draft two of the budget, if that's okay with the board. In other words, the next budget forum is on March 8th, but for the 21st, we'll have a revised version of draft one as that's taking shape. I'd like to just do a brief, not at the level at the, at the forum, just a brief overview, update on draft two as we move through that process. The third and fourth items, action items we're looking for board's support on, is that through the Air Office of Economic, of Community Economic Development, we're going to be, going to be hosting a Devens Symposium, a two-day event on March 10th and 11th, designed to really get the town of Air informed and energized in a positive and fun way about the importance and issues of Devens and Devens disposition. And I'm sure Alan will have a report in the near future as it takes shape on the itinerary for that. The key to the success is participation. We, we're going to try to stress, now we're going to invite going to invite, we're asking the board to approve tonight, the invitation, which is in the packet, as well as a letter to Mark. So let's just start with the letter to Mark. So one of the components of the symposium Alan has planned is on the first day, March 10th, is after some activity here, is to take a tour of some of the key points on Devens, such as Vicksburg Square, McPherson Road by the, by the river, so forth. Mark, we would like to use the Mark vans to transport people for that. What's required, it's a Mark procedure, is for the select board, they require a letter, which is in your, your packet, a letter from the board requesting those vans, and then we can get that set up. So the first item, item three, is looking for your authorization and for signature by the board for the request for the transportation for that event.
Just, the dates were wrong in the letter.
The dates are wrong in the letter. I just saw that, so it's March 10th and 11th, not the 3rd and the 4th. We will, we will change that.
Put the vans sitting out there maybe.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
Otherwise, I have no.
No questions, yeah.
Make a motion for the board, vote to approve the letter to Mark requesting shuttle vans for March 10th and 11th.
Just, it'll be just the 10th.
Okay.
For the 10th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
And then the next item you have in, in your packet that Alan put together is sort of the invitation text. So with the board's support, we're looking for your approval on that. We are going to use this information in two ways. One, it depends on the recipient. We're going to send out a bunch of formal letters with this information inviting all kinds of stakeholders. We're also going to use this information as some of the promotional texts and so forth as we promote this. The real key thing that we're stressing on here, and we're going to continue to stress, is why we're starting early, is we want to get as many people to RSVP to participate. Now, it's a two-day symposium with a bunch of different scheduled activities, as you'll see as we finalize that. There's a picture of it. The success is, even if folks, including members of the public, can't attend the whole thing, or only part of it, or some aspect of it, we really want to stress that, but we're also having an RSVP on it so that we can plan for not only the transportation, but food and refreshments and so forth. So the item four, we're just looking for your authorization for this invitation text.
Once we've given the approval, Alan, very, very excited. So we're going to be setting him loose, just so you know.
So I'll make a motion.
I did say no to the heart.
I'll make a motion for the board to approve the text that you are invited for the Devens Air Symposium as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. He gave, so if you happen to watch the Devens Jurisdiction Framework Committee meeting that we had had last month.
Last month?
He gave a synopsis of it, and it, only Alan can make this symposium sound exciting.
Yeah.
So I think this, I think it'll be a lot of fun, and I think it'll be very beneficial for all of us, so. All right. No, I, I, that was a hard no.
Then item, item five, as we, the board has brought before the board every year, is the 2023 seasonal population estimate for the ABCC, and through the chair, I'll turn it to the assistant town manager on this item.
Thank you. So basically, we just have to report to the state that we're not expecting a large seasonal population increase, such as communities on the Cape, because those, they will increase their number of licenses with the population influx. We don't have that here in tropical.
We're not in tourist attraction.
Yeah, I guess not. So we just have to confirm our current population, which I got the figures from the town clerk.
What is it?
7,100 as of July 1st.
Even? That sounds a little suspicious.
We should bring her in here.
Not surrounded.
Yeah.
Surrounded. Ish.
Make a motion for approval of that?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that the select board approve the 2023 seasonal population estimate for the ABCC.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
I'll endorse by all.
Yes.
All right.
And lastly, Madam Chair, item six is amendment number eight to the agreement for veteran services between the Town of Air and Mass Development. As the board is aware, for several years, and this partnership has worked well, the Town of Air's veteran administrator, Mr. Tutilian, does provide veteran services to veterans that live on Devens. We have an agreement in place with them for quite some time, agreeing to that fact, and they do pay a portion of Mike's professional time there. Amendment eight extends the existing agreement till August of 2023, so it's just an extension of the current terms.
No questions?
With the signature by the chair.
I'll make a motion for the board to approve the extension of the agreement for veteran services till August 31st, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
So Madam Chair, unless there are any questions from the select board, thank you for your time, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, so yesterday, I had to sign on, so I had my notes, and then I had something in there that had more, better notes, so I wanted to get the better notes. Okay. So yesterday, the chair, the select board chair of Harvard, of Shirley, Victor Norman, who's the chair of the Devens Jurisdiction Framework Committee, and myself, we met with Dan Rivera and Meg Delacore.
Delory.
Delory, thank you. Who's Delor? Delory. And there was another person, which unfortunately, I've forgotten the individual's name. So it was kind of a, why were we being invited to this thing? So we all kind of walked in like, you know, I laughed, and I felt like we were getting called to the principal's office, because there's kind of ominous. So basically, what it was, is that they were getting invites for pretty much every one of us to engage, okay? And they weren't, though Meg would occasionally reply back to somebody. I was emailing Dan and never got a reply, and I even said to him, I said, you know, I think that's rude. So basically, what they wanted to let us know is that because of, in the previous, when Mass Development was attending the monthly meetings of this framework committee, they were kind of the drivers, which they kind of were. They, and it was a self-imposed. So they were hosting it, they were pretty much taking care of the agenda, they were pretty much, you know, doing Zoom meeting, whatever needed to be done, they were doing the legwork. No one asked them to do it, they just kind of did it, okay? So this was felt to, that needed to be changed. No argument from us, because as we pointed out, we were able to do it on our own. No one asked them to do it, and we've been quite functional on our own, and now we're doing it quarterly. So they kind of let us know that they will engage with us, they will be responsive to the framework committee's needs, but they're not going to really be attending, okay? Now, that's not necessarily a bad thing, because they don't necessarily need to always be there, but they definitely, as I pointed out, you need to respond, okay? If you, if you were asked a question, or you, you know, respond, it, it's just like a text. You get a text, hey, you want to do lunch? You don't respond three weeks later. That's rude. You just send it back. It only takes a minute to say, hey, I'm sorry, I can't attend. They, it was mentioned that maybe, because we all kind of liked the meeting, it was nice to have this sit-down, would we like to do this again? The others were sure, and I was like, well, I will go if you invite me and I have time, but why can't you attend our meeting? Why do I have to come to your meeting if you can't have time to my meeting? So that was, that was kind of a silent surprise by everybody in the room. They just kind of laid there, okay? So there was no further discussion. So, so again, if, if invited and I have the time, I certainly would attend, but I've already let them know, and have been let know, our next quarterly meeting's in April. So we'll sit on that note. Now, but we did get some updates that I do want to pass on, because this is also some good info for all of us to know what's going on. So basically, what they're focused on is completing the reuse plan, including these major projects, public safety buildings, PFAS, permanent water treatment facility, Level Road Bridge. So I think that's the bridge that they were talking about a couple of months ago, which I did have an occasion to remind them that Robert was fixing a bridge while I was at the meeting yesterday, because, well, we all know how it was worded a couple of months ago. So Vicksburg Square is not a priority. They're going to look at non-residential uses. Now, they said that no one cared about there being a residential. I said, well, that's incorrect. What we really said was, we would like some residential. We all agree that housing is needed, but the problem is, and I happen to be sitting across from the Harvard chair, is that about 20% of Vicksburg Square is in Harvard, with the rest is in Air. I said, now, if I thought that, you know, I could just sit down with Harvard and say, look, you give me your 20%, and you can have this 20%, and then we could all move forward with Vicksburg Square, well, wouldn't that be a wonderful world? But therein lies the problem, okay? It's not that no one doesn't want some residential. It has to do with this historical line, and we have homes, which will also get covered during the symposium, that are sitting in, I think, two towns and three counties? Is that what you, is that what, two counties, two towns, two counties? I don't know why it said a third, okay? And so that's why this is kind of important, these things to be important. And ideally, and I didn't get a chance to say this yesterday, but I'm going to say that this is my thought, because I think this is an ideal world thought. Wouldn't it be nice if we could have super town meeting, like on Devens, where everyone shows up at Devens, so that everyone, all three towns, got the same presentation at the same time? Wouldn't that be nice? But that would be an optimistic world. Okay. There's going to be changes in the Devens administration. They're going from EVP, Executive Vice President, to superintendent, superintendent position. They're dividing functions between real estate, land sales, asset management, and then, of course, they have operations. They will not participate in planning for the future governance until about 2029, because as they said, they don't have, you know, horse in this race. That is true, okay? They really don't. But I says, well, your predecessors thought they did, and they've shown up at, at these meetings in the past, where they were in the audience yelling, we're not going nowhere. You can't make us leave until 2033. And as I said, well, that's not true, because if the towns all, you know, if all the ducks aligned, and the towns were ready, we would go to the state and say, no, we're ready now. We want you to make the decision now. So I said, so stop thinking that 2033 is, is in cement, okay? Because 2033 could get tweaked, depending on, you know, if everything goes fine, okay? But they have no objection to the work of the framework committee. Well, that's good. Good to know. They will fund the work of consultants from the Devens Fund at a later date. Now, the consultants would be, ideally, is that, you know, again, ideally is what it is, is it's supposed to be, you know, our committee, we come up with our plan, or, or what needs to be done. Shirley the same, Harvard the same, and then we get the consultant to kind of put it together so that we come out with the best result, okay? So that's, that was the idea about the consultant in the future. So don't expect to be involved in Devens once the redevelopment work is complete, so they, they expect to, you know, someday go bye-bye, okay? And then our contact person for the towns and the framework committee is Meg Deloria, and she is going to provide us a large map of the Devens, showing uses, zoning, towns, and boundaries, okay? Which I asked that we at least have the printout prior to the symposium. I says, we want a nice, big printout so that we can have it in the frame for the symposium for people to look at, okay? And that will have not only the historical lines, but like where buildings are sitting in the middle of these historical lines. So, you know, you have to understand that when, when Devens was being built to be a fort and whatnot, the army wasn't saying, oh, no, you know, move that house, you know, five feet over so that it's only an air, okay? They were just plunking a house down, okay? So those things need to be looked at, okay? Now, evidently, Devens Barracks is going to get upgraded, so I guess they had, what, 230,000 soldiers being trained, and they think it's going to get increased? So I said, oh, Fort Devens coming back? That your BRAC committee working, you know, just don't get me started. I'm a veteran, don't get me started with these BRAC things. The Secretary of Energy, the national, Secretary of Energy is supposedly visiting this week for them, so that's kind of, I don't know why. Army is still cleaning up Salerno Circle. They are awaiting the DEP, and once they get word from the DEP, it will be cleaned up under residential criteria, because I think there was some confusion as to whether or not it would be commercial or residential, so it would be residential criteria. Save the date, August 19th, 2023, is Devens Day, okay? So there was one last year. I guess it went well, but I guess the army did decide that that whole long day didn't quite work, so it will be more of like, I don't know, like a two to three start time, and then the fireworks and whatnot. So, and this is being hosted by the army, which they will get input with the recounts, okay? So it's going to be a whole nice thing, okay? So save the date on that. And then again, like I said, the Mass Development will be responsive to the committee's needs, but they're no longer going to be the driver. That's fine. I don't think they should be. Like I said, they, they did kind of, I don't know how it happened. It just happened, and they just were kind of taking over and doing everything, but so that will stop. So again, the next committee meeting for the Devens Jurisdiction Framework Committee is, I believe it's April 12th, except Wednesday, and that one will be held in Harvard, okay, because it rotates. And that is my update for my meeting. All right? Okay. All right, now, so with that, we have the January 17th, 2023 meeting minutes. I didn't notice anything, so.
I didn't see anything. I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes for January 17th, 2023 as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, meeting minutes are approved. And with that, I'd like to have a motion to move us into executive session.
I make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, exemption number three, litigation strategy to discuss the National Opioid Lawsuit Consortium, and to adjourn at the conclusion of executive session, discussing these matters in open session. We will be detrimental to the town's negotiating strategy.
Second.
All those in favor? Scott, Sean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Good night. We are in the executive session.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.